Hope that didn't go over the TV.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you for joining us at our May 7 meeting. Please take note of all the exits around the room and now join me as we salute the Stars and Stripes.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And before we begin, welcome back to our vice chair, esteemed colleague, Mr. Groninger. For anyone in the audience who's been curious as to why Mr. Groninger hasn't been around, he went to Florida to avoid the snow and ice. And when he arrived, his wife promptly slipped and broke her ankle and had to stay longer. So, we're pleased to have you back.
Thank you, Michael.
The first time on the agenda is Francesa's. Applicants are seeking a lot line revision. I kept this on the agenda only because I believe prior last meeting, a new EAF was required, and I don't recall whether the EAF was changed here that night and initial by the applicant, or we were waiting for a new one. We're waiting for a new one? That's what I thought. And we're not able to set up a public hearing until we have all the accurate information, correct, Ms. Polidoro? And so, we can't complete Seeker if we don't have a properly completed environmental assessment form. So, Ms. Knapp, can you contact Mr. -- one of the two applicants and remind them that we need a new EAF? Thank you. Next time on the agenda is Whitman and Healy. Applicants are also seeking a lot line revision at 60 Old Post Road and 13 Molford Avenue. Applicants are here if you want to come up. In the interim, they've submitted new AAF and new plans without -- new plans, we'll put it that way. So, tonight, we're considering typing the action and making a determination of significance. Just before we get into that, I have a question for you. Is this going to necessitate an address change for you now since you're losing the -- have you checked with 911 to make certain?
No, we haven't, but we're still looking for cars.
They're going to remind me, Mr. Sweet's going to come running up here if you don't speak into the microphone. One of the two, yes. You were cudgelled last time, so...
We plan on keeping room for one car where our current driveway is.
Great. I don't really deal with 911. Is that sufficient for them to keep a small driveway?
I agree. If they have one of those doors where the driveway is facing, I just wouldn't say that we can check.
Okay. Any comments from the consultants on this application? Any comments from the board? Has everyone had a chance to review the new plans?
No.
None, no comment.
Oh, good. Thank you. Who has this file?
I do. Okay, we have to go through impact statement. Let's see. It would appear, I'll read through these.
It's been awhile.
Does not appear that any of them have any impact. No to small.
Then we can stipulate that we've all gone through? Or do you want to read them one by one?
I think...
I'll stipulate that we've all gone through.
I will agree with that stipulation. As I say, I see no impacts on the lot line.
And this is a short form environmental assessment?
Yes, it is.
So, it's just the nine questions? Are we all in concurrence? That they'll be --
Yes, yes.
Great. So, you may just check off all the ones on the left?
I will do that. Here comes the sound zone.
It's not going to break out in song, are you?
Uh-oh.
And then I'll fill that out. And then you have a resolution?
I do have a resolution. Up, up, up. Our attorney has...
Ah, that sounds good.
I guess we need to poll the consultants.
So, it wasn't my fault this time? No.
Use your pen.
You get to live another day.
Thank you.
Let me pass this up to Robert.
Yes, please.
Okay, there you go, Robert.
Then we'll follow this.
The resolution as amended.
All righty.
Michael, Dolores Healy's here. Hello, Ms. Healy, welcome.
Okay, resolution typing the action, Whitman, Healy, Lot Line Alteration, May 7, 2014, Resolution 13-46. Whereas the applicants, Michael and Catherine, Whitman, have submitted an application for lot line alteration to convey .118 acre from lands of Healy to lands of Whitman. And whereas the subject parcels of land are located on Old Post Road and Molford Avenue in the Hamlet four zoning district. Whereas lot line alteration will not result in any new nonconformities. And whereas the applicant has submitted a short EAF. And whereas according to New York State Environmental Quality Review Act, commonly known as SEACRA, the board -- the said board is required to determine the classification of the proposed action. Now therefore be it resolved that the planning board hereby classifies the project as an unlisted under SEACRA for which an uncoordinated review may be conducted. Be it further resolved that the planning board hereby adopts a determination of nonsignificance for the project. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. I believe we're ready to set up a public hearing. Can we set this for May 21st? Make a motion to do so?
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Yay.
Thank you.
Thank you both for coming in, and thank you for moving expeditiously on the plans at the last moment. And we'll see you in two weeks.
Okay.
The next time on the agenda are signage -- two items on the agenda are signage for State Farm, the Levi Wallace location. I believe that someone's here to represent. And you would be, can you state your name for the record?
My name is Nancy Forrest, and I'm with Gloody Signs here to represent.
Before I turn it over to the board for any questions they may have, I had a couple of questions, chief amongst which is, is on the awning sign, it appears that the letters that are proposed are two inches high?
Give me one copy. I know I've reviewed this back and forth with Ted, so I'll make sure I'm looking at the...
It's the letters proposed at two inches, the capital letter at two and three eighths, and then the telephone number is at one and three quarter.
I believe that is correct, yes.
The image that you've shown, the superimposition, to give us an illustration of what it might look like, the S and the state and the F are clearly about the same size as the window panes and the door, which means that they're much bigger than two inches.
Do you have all the sizes on yours?
I do. They're written down here. I'm just wanting to make certain that what I see here doesn't look as two inches. So, rather than you erect something that was approved at two inches, if it comes up and it's bigger, Ted will make you take the sign down.
Okay. This drawing was not done by me. I'm working for Insight Group, but I am going to be making them.
It's not to scale.
Exactly. I'm going to be actually, our company will be fabricating the awnings?
Great.
And lettering the awnings, so, yes.
That's all I wanted to know, because two inches is really small, and it's appropriate as you're walking up as a pedestrian to it.
Exactly. It's not meant to be like, you know...
Visible from the road.
Yeah.
I didn't think so. Okay, thank you. Any questions or comments from the board as to the two signs?
No.
I think I emailed around when we changed the sign code. Originally, it stated that signs needed to have design unity with other signs in the area.
Correct.
But that was legally vague at best, with area not being defined, so we reduced it to just all signs have to exhibit design unity within the site. And I think clearly these two signs do, so...
May I see what you have for the other sign? There's so many drawings going back and forth, because when Ted sent me those photos that I believe you may have forwarded to her, I went back to them. Is that the one that has the finials at the top?
It has the laron finials at the top.
And it has the header in the bottom?
It has the header in the bottom.
Okay. That would be an add-on that we would be doing, since we're not fabricating the sign. I went back to them and told them the board, they'd have a better chance if they made the poles white, put finials on top, and created a header and a base, similar to what I did for the Sunoco.
You did a very nice job there.
Thank you.
So, thank you. I think what Ted's concern was, Ms. Moss isn't here for me to be saying it, but I think her concern was that it's a different shade of red than the areas, the other signage in the area is predominantly maroon with the gold and black, and this is corporate colors, I know.
Yeah, and it's copyrighted corporate colors, so they...
Well, just so you know, I usually don't care, no offense.
Yeah.
If our sign code says something else, then we can mandate it, we do. But I respect corporate branding, believe me. And I understand that they've copyrighted this particular shade of red, because I see it in all the other State Farm signs around here. But it's code conformant, as far as I can see, so to that extent, we don't try to make changes. Any other comments from the board? Who has this file?
It'll be me. Resolution number 14-14. Whereas, 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 now therefore be resolved that the planning board has reviewed the application and recommends the sign permit to be issued within 10 days of this recommendation as specified in the code.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Do you have two resolutions there, Mr. Murphy?
Yes, they're all one.
It's just one for both signs, correct? Both the awning and the freestanding sign? Great. So, I wanted to make sure. Thank you.
You're welcome.
The next application is St. James Antiochian Orthodox Church sign permits, and I'm going to guess that you're here for that, too.
Yes, I am.
Mac, did you design these as well?
Yes.
May I compliment you?
Thank you.
I'm not joking.
Yeah.
They really match the church, the edifice, the exterior. They look really, really, really sharp and slick, and they're tasteful, the lettering. I can't say enough good things about it. Seriously.
Thank you. We don't hear that often, so thank you very much.
It's a real compliment. I like the way you did the little, I'm not sure what to call them, domes on the sides?
Right.
To match the domes on the actual church architecture? I'm sure Mr. Neshawat was happy with this.
Yes, yes, he is. He's very happy.
I know from experience, he's not always easy to please, so...
Um, yeah.
Any comments from the board on this signage?
I guess, no. I'm a little concerned about how close it will ultimately end up to the sidewalk, because all we have, I believe, is a dot on our drawings.
It's really pretty open. If you have a specific amount that you'd like it set back, are you talking about the walkway up to the church or the sidewalk?
I'm talking how close the edge of that sign, because it is a very, very long sign. It's a very pretty sign, don't get me wrong, but I've had multiple people complain or comment to me as a planning board member, geez, how on earth did we let those steps get so close to 9G and whatnot? I realize that's not the fundamental problem, but I just want to make sure the sign is set back so it doesn't overpower the sidewalk in the street again.
Yeah, we have plenty of room to work there, so if what you're seeing on the map, if you'd like it, you know, further back both from...
Well, that's my problem. What I see on the map is just a dot. It doesn't have any meaning for something that is how many feet long?
If your drawing not scaled, I'm sorry.
Well, no, no. At the time when we approved the site plan, signage was not contemplated. So, normally, and plus, to be honest with you, this was one of the first applications that Ann and I, when we were placed on the planning board review, that we were told not to mess with it, because it was so far down the line. So, on the site plan, there's just a dot. In other words, now we would ask for an area for the sign to be shown, or proposed width, so we would have an ability to judge what it looks like in C2. So, what we have here, we have the same thing you have.
That's the one I have.
But at the bottom, it says, customer's art is too small for scaling up to size, so Mr. Groninger wanted to make certain that it wouldn't somehow come out to right here.
Like literally come right to the edge of the sidewalk or something.
What are you recommending the offset be?
This sidewalk and this sidewalk.
You're talking about a two-foot offset?
No, no. Here's the issue. If it comes all the way down to the sidewalk, then as you're exiting Yates, you can't, you might have some of your vision occluded for coming cars.
I realize the grass is fairly wide here. I'm just asking for something that gives a real position variance on the site plan.
This is a five foot. This is, the grass rail is five feet, the sidewalk is four, so there's a nine-foot area now that people can see when cars are approaching. If the side, if that sign comes all the way to here, we were worried that it might cause safety issues.
No, I know him at least six feet back. If you'd like further back, it's fine.
No, six feet is all right.
Six feet sounds fine. We just need something that says that.
Okay.
Super.
If you want that, you can initial the application tonight and write, we'll be at least six feet back.
Okay.
It could be six or more, that would be fine.
Minimum six foot.
Right.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Who has this resolution?
I do. I actually have two resolutions.
Is it supposed to be two?
One for the sign that's actually on the building, and one that's for the freestanding sign.
Okay. Resolution recommendation for issuance of sign permit pursuant to Town Code Section 108-24.3A 4D, St. James Antiochian Orthodox Church, Resolution number 14-14. Whereas, 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 now therefore be resolved that the board makes the following findings with respect to the requested wall sign. One, the increase in size is appropriate due to the size of the building upon which the symbol is being placed. Be it further resolved that the board hereby grants the applicant the requested symbol size to permit a maximum symbol height of 24 inches as shown on the plan, and recommends the sign permit for the wall sign be issued within 10 days of the recommendation specified in the code. You have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstained? Motion carries.
And the second one, resolution recommendation for issuance of sign permit pursuant to Town Code Section 108-24.3A 4D, St. James Antiochian Orthodox Church, Resolution number 14-13A. Whereas, whereas, be it resolved, the board hereby recommends the sign permit be issued within 10 days of the recommendation specified in the code.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries. And the next time on the agenda is a signed recommendation to the ZBA for TEG Federal Credit Union, and are you here for that, too?
Yes, I am.
Okay. Has everyone had a chance to review the file that was sent to us?
I have.
We're not here to make a recommendation on the sign. The applicants were needed variance first. The variance they're looking for would be a maximum letter height of 14 inches, and they're also looking for a maximum symbol height of 19 inches with width of 18 inches. For both, the code specifies that it's only 10 inches. I didn't prepare a letter, because I didn't hear from anybody yet about how you'd like, what you'd like to do, recommend or not. So, let me start from my left. Mr. Murphy, do you think that...
I would like to know, other than just the fact that they want it out in your face, the reasoning behind it. It seems very close to the road. To me, you know, we do enlarge for being further off the road, but that, that's right there.
Do you have a response to us for that?
Actually, I do. We have a 30-square-foot sign, which is what your town allows. Unlike some other businesses, this is all that is on their sign. Their logo happens to be like that. As a reference to how big that logo actually is, the Rondell Bank across the street has a 19-inch diameter logo. What I currently have up there, the sign that is currently up there, is actually the letters are larger than 14 inches. So, and, so really, it's based on, if I could show this to scale, if I did a 10-inch letter, and again, if I could kind of refer back to the Sunoco, we had to go in front of the ZBA for a 24-inch logo. And if you've seen it in this last week, I finally got that one in, because they manufactured it incorrectly, that's 24 inches, and that means the diamond itself is 24. So, my letters are less than three inches on the sign, and it kind of looks a little silly, I think, when you go by, but at least we were able to get the two foot on that one. So, really, it's a matter of square footage and filling space, of not making it, you know, that's what's appropriate. Actually, the larger would be for the 30-square-foot sign.
Are you, the logo aside, are you stating that the letter height is more appropriate to the size of the sign?
Yes. The letter, the logo, the whole balance of it.
30 feet is the maximum that's allowed.
Right.
Have your clients considered reducing the size of the sign?
Um, no. Certainly, you know, nobody's going to want to go with less than what they have. I don't know what the, how the ZBA did on the Rondell Bank sign, which, like I said, is a 19-inch logo.
That's just the logo. The letters are code compliant on the Rondell sign.
And the letters on the current TEG sign are higher than the 14 inches I'm asking for, even though it's a four by six, because that is the appropriate size for the sign that is there.
Again, I'll repeat that the Rondell Bank has a larger symbol, but the letters are 10 inches, as required by code.
I mean, if it has to be 10 inches, I'll make it 10. Will it balance? Will it look, you know?
Be a lot of negative space.
Yeah, absolutely.
Lots of negative space.
A lot of white.
Yeah, but the sign, the sign, it's a maximum. It could be reduced.
No, I understand that.
Better balance between the letters and the negative space.
I under, yeah, I understand that. I think they would still choose, wish to go with their 30-square-foot, even if they come in smaller on it. As you can see, we created a nice stone base for it. The lettering, the lighting, I reviewed with Ted. I don't know if you had a night shot on that, but the top of the sign does overhang, and the lighting is hidden, there'll be no bulbs showing. And if we feel that that's not enough to properly light it, or makes it look like it's not fully lit, there are a lot of new products out there now that are not floods that in one direction or other, you would see a bulb. They now have LED base mounts that would be almost like directly under the sign, that just flood up, and that's probably what we would choose to use should we feel we need more lighting.
Did you do the sign for Hyde Park Mall, the new Stop &amp; Shop, the sign as it's called?
No, that's with fluorescents. No, I did not. I did the...
Kind of lighting bar over the top.
Right. That's, that's a little bit different. It's a standard, comes off like an upside-down gutter, and you, you know, put it in like that.
It's good description.
We're going to be using the LEDs. It's very similar, only if you look at your drawing, this is an integral part of the sign.
Right.
This is a custom fabrication unit, instead of something that just has arms coming out with that on it.
Okay. So, it'll have a globe, it'll have a globe coming down regardless.
Straight down.
Okay. Mr. Groninger, any comments about how you'd like me to address?
Yeah, I do. Again, that sign is literally right along the side of the road. This is not like a McDonald's or something where a tourist, it's a drive-by, oh, I want to make a U-turn and go in there. You go to a credit union, because you know where it is. I would have a problem. We have a code, and I think we should be suggesting the zoning board make a adhere to the code. If, in fact, it makes the sign a little bit smaller there, I have no problem with a smaller sign. I realize the code allows you the 30-square-foot, but if you're concerned about white space, you know, I think 10-inch letters in a, you know, a much smaller sign certainly is appropriate. I really do. That's why, that's why we have a code. You know, if they can make a case of why it should be bigger, so be it. And that's what the Zoning Board of Appeals is for, but that's my opinion.
Thank you. I should have added, it's not a part of this application, but Ms. Moss and I met with the representative from the bank and one of their consultants, and they're planning on coming in to re-clad the exterior of the bank, and they'll be re-cladding it in the base of the stone base. They'll be using similar materials, so the stone, the new sign will match with what the proposed exterior is on the new struc, not of the structure, I should say. That's one of the reasons why when we were talking to them, telling them what, that's why they did this. They'll also be coming in, if you see there's, this is not the landscaping that's there right now, because the sign doesn't exist right there, they'll be coming in with new landscaping as well at some point. But in the meantime, this is just for the ZBA.
Yes, I've spoken to Doug, and I have been in touch about the whole stone thing and what's going to happen there. As far as the setback, it meets, it meets the code that you have. Again, if you'd like it to be pushed a little bit further back, I'm happy to do that. It's basically sent, almost centered in that aisle, but from the edge of the road, it meets the code setback, so that's where we placed it, but...
Thank you for being so cooperative.
Yeah.
Ms. Dexter, any comments?
It's the easy stuff.
My only question, again, and it's, I guess I would prefer a smaller sign also, because once you do bring it into compliance with the code, then it becomes a smaller sign. So, I would definitely prefer to see that. And then my other question is, there was just a piece of paper here that talks about the bank sign with time and temperature, but your actual application is not for a bank sign with time and temperature.
No, I've been told there are going to be no other signs, because at one point, it was brought to my attention that there was something going on the front. I do all of TEG's work all over the place, and they said, no, they weren't quite sure. The people that I deal with, where that came from, I said, I need you to tell me there is going to be no front wall sign. And I, and there's not. And I, and I also spoke to Ted about the other signage that is on the property, which is the small directional sign on the north side of the building. Did you pass that one with the 10-inch letter? Because that, if, are we saying I can have the logo can be up to that, and then I'll do the 10-inch letters?
People haven't really weighed in on the logo.
Well, I mean, that's what I was looking at when I said, when you, when you make the letters, then the sign shrinks. You don't use the whole 30-square-feet. It can become a much more, you can design it down, so the whole thing is more in scale with each other.
Right. That won't, I mean, obviously, won't be my decision to do. It's obvious that they can do that.
It's almost like it's at odds. You know, by saying you have 10-inch letters?
Yeah.
And you're allowed 30-square-feet, when you only have three letters in your name, it's kind of overkill.
I think...
Well, they still have the Federal Credit Union on it as well.
True.
So, I mean, I don't want to play with their logo any, but if it's going to go to 10-inch, I can make the Federal Credit Union letters larger to fill some space, if they wish to do that.
I, I think in this case, you know, less might be more, because you're going to drown out, you know, the logo and the letters if you're putting, you know, like what Ms. Dexter's saying, if you're putting those 10-inch letters on that 30-square-foot sign, you're going to lose the logo. If it's a little bit smaller, and you're, you know, code compliant, I think you're going to actually have a more attractive, more visible sign. It's just, you know, my put on it.
Like I said, I honestly feel that they're not going to want to give up the stature of the 30-square-feet with the base small. But as far as complying with the letters, like I said, I can alter that a little bit. It'll be their choice. I'll take your recommendations back to them, and I would still be going in front of the ZBA.
Yeah, I was just going to add, this is just for us to send a letter, and the ZBA's, they're free to ignore our recommendations, and they have, many a time.
Well, yeah.
But I think we're asking you what you're going to have to, what you're going to have to do in front of the ZBA, we're asking kind of tonight, so you'll have to make the case for them, too.
Like, yeah, I've been there.
That's, you know, what we're saying, I get it.
I had to do that, like I said, with, with Sunoco, and, you know...
You know, if it was 75 or 100-foot back from the road, that's why we have the ability to add inches to lettering.
Right.
You know, it's, it's a roadside sign, and as I say, it is not a drive-by kind of thing. It's something that you go there, you know it's already there. You've looked it up on the Internet, or whatever, you remember.
I think you've made your argument that if it's, if three foot is what your client desires, and you're trying to create a sign that maximizes...
Balances it.
Balances it out to the overall size, so you may be able to, you may be able to persuade the ZBA members that that's, you know, critical, although they may also be suggesting that you scale back the overall size of the sign, too. You never know. Ms. Polidoro is the attorney for the ZBA as well, and even she can't guess sometimes.
Yes.
At any rate, I'll compose a letter, and we'll have it for our next meeting to be sent back to the ZBA. I think I heard pretty loud and clear, and I thank you for your patience and your interest and your time here. And again, since you said you don't hear it very often, really good job with that church sign. I think I know of an organization that will be nominating that for a beautification award at the end of the year. I sit on the board of that organization, so I can guarantee it, actually.
I'll be happy to hear that.
Nancy, before you go, can you just give me that signed application?
Absolutely. You want my copy of it, or?
Or, do we have the file?
It should be on the file there.
Do you have, like, do you have more than one? Absolutely.
Yeah, I have that.
Can you pass it down to me?
Yeah.
We can just go in the hallway if you can.
Okay.
Thank you for recalling that. The next time on the agenda is Anderson Center Telecommunications Tower, and the applicants are here this evening. If you'll state your name for the record. In case you couldn't tell, we're televised, that's why you see a lot of this going on. We're broadcast live, for that matter. If you have an easel, I believe that probably the best place for it would be to angle it not at us, but toward the back wall, so the camera can take up.
Good. All the boards we have has had the...
Sure. Are we doing okay?
Yeah, we're just going to get the portal mic warmed up.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That'd be great.
This way if you need to stand up and point. This way if you need to stand up and point. Mistress Sweet is the Cecil B. DeMille of local broadcasting, I assure you.
Spending a lot of time-
Student of.
I don't know the names of current, there you are, student of Cecil B. DeMille. Steven Spielberg, there we are. There's a, there's a live director. And Mistress Sweet, can you actually, can the camera pick, pick these up where they're located?
I believe so.
Okay.
Hello.
Okay. You don't need to get too close, but-
I'll try. Actually, I might be able to stay down here, but if I do need to go through-
Okay, if you get up and do-
Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Appreciate it very much. For the record, my name is Adam Walters. I'm an attorney at Phillips Seidel and I represent New Singular Wireless PCS LLC, otherwise known as AT&amp;T. With me here tonight is Tim Rapp from Aerosmith. Tim is our site acquisition consultant. Site acquisition consultant typically handles a lot of the paperwork and details, pulls together the information necessary for the applications. And Tim has been working on this file with me for a little while.
It's a hefty file.
It is a hefty file. I apologize for killing some trees.
I know. This has been coming to me in piecemeal fashion anyway, so been asked for comments for impacts to state historic sites, et cetera. So it's nice to have it finally come before the full board. I'll leave it at that.
Great. The, we're here tonight to ask, we're asking for approval of modifications to an existing commercial telecommunications facility pursuant to section sixty-four oh nine of the Federal Middle Class Tax Relief and Job Creation Act. Very simply, what we want to do, we have an existing facility and I do understand that there are some challenges in terms of prior approvals relative to the facility and what the town records may show. But the basic facility is it currently exists. And at tab I of your materials, we just included the photo of what's currently at the site. It's an existing wooden seventy-six point five inch wooden pole. I did actually, before we submitted the application materials, based on my discussions with Tad, I had them drop a tape. So they actually measured it and that is the actual final height.
Good, because you, in the materials that I've seen thus far, we had differing heights every time, so.
Oh, yeah. Seventy-six point five is our understanding and that was based on that tape drop.
The top of the pole?
That is top of the pole.
And are antenna tips up higher than that, the new ones? Because I had a hard time in looking through this, trying to figure out exactly where they were mounted on the pole.
It can be confusing. So the easiest exhibit to look at is under tab A. And I'm looking at a page, it looks like it's the page with the tower elevation. Tim, can you just bring that one up for me? It's, should be on those boards. There we go. Flip it right around. Fourth sheet. So this is a, an elevation of the existing tower.
Mm-hmm.
The antennas do come above the top of the wooden pole. So that's where the elevation gets, that's as it exists today. And the, the center line height of the existing and proposed is, dun, 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 give me one second to find it.
Certainly.
The center line height is currently at seventy-two point five feet. I'm sorry, seventy-two five inches is what it says as the center line height.
So I think the top of the antenna would be at about seventy-nine, but-
If the, the antennas themselves are seventy-two inches, I'm sorry, seventy-two, yep, seventy-two inches.
So it's thirty-six inches or three feet above center line. That's very simple then.
Yes.
Seventy-nine point five.
It is seventy-nine point five. So that is what's currently there. The proposal is to add three additional antennas at the same exact height. The three that are up there stay. They don't change at all.
Right. Okay. That's the part I could not find somewhere here where it said the three new ones, the height of the three new ones would not be any higher than the existing three.
Right. That is the case.
It may be in there and, as I say, I did spend some time trying to dig that out.
Yeah.
Couldn't find it, but I trust you. You tell me it's there, it's there.
It should be there on the drawings and sometimes they get buried in there. But our, our, our understanding is, and as we presented the application, we are adding three additional antennas. They will be at the same maximum height as the current existing antennas. They will not extend above those.
So that's seventy-nine point five, right?
That's what they came up with, yep.
Anything else to add?
The additional equipment that will be added, some new antennas, cables running between the antennas. We also have things we call RRUs, remote radio units. They sit right behind the antennas. It's basically an equipment box mounted behind there. Helps communicate between the wireless communications and the antenna. And the boxes down below increases the efficiency of the system. We also have some new equipment cabinets that will be added to the site. All work will take place within the existing fenced compound.
Are the RRUs the same as the RRH units?
The RRUs are the same as the RRHs. There's a lot of acronyms in the telecom world and sometimes it does get confusing.
Right. I figured they were the same.
And altogether, the way, what I read in here, there are six new cabinets being installed.
There are six new cabinets coming in, all on the ground level, all within the existing compound. So none of the existing cabinets come out, all added at the base of the compound.
Was the generator installed?
The generator is there now.
Ms. Axelson, any comments?
A few. I'm, I'm going to memorialize some of these in, in my review letter and I'm, you know, of course, will, you know, go from Tad's letter. Anyway, I did look at the code. Just a couple of quick questions. Are you intending to put SOX on any of the antennas or RRH units? Are they SOX so that they'll be a different color or they're going to be that sort of gray-white?
They will be that gray-white color.
They will be that.
Yep.
Let's see. You've already answered some of my questions. On the fencing that you have, I realize it's all sort of internal in the site. I don't know if the planning board's going to want to see some slats or maybe just a few bushes on the side that faces the parking lot, you know. It's inside the site. It's inside the Anderson School. There's a building and parking nearby. There aren't any neighbors, you know.
No, there's no residential, even though the site is residential in nature, there are people who live there full-time in the, in the housing.
Right.
But there's, the entire site is still a commercial site or educational use. So there's no required screening in the area. In addition, the location is pretty buried deep within the site. There's not a chance of a passerby from nine or driver seeing it. You can't even really drive to it that easily. You've got to know where you're going.
Yeah, actually, that's one of the things I think would be helpful for the record for the board in terms of, you know, being able to state that it's not visible, would be to have some kind of a map showing the terrain or contours that show the adjacent Hudson River parcel to the north. You know, kind of an area map with contours and maybe some kind of a quickie site section that would run between Route Nine and the river. Because I think if you did a simple site section, it would be very clear that you're not going to see this.
Yeah, I guess-
I'm not looking for visual impact analysis.
I understand that.
Just a simple illustration for the record.
I would suggest to the board, having been out there just as, as early as tonight, drove around the Anderson School for about twenty minutes before I could find the facility. It is extremely difficult to find even within the property.
Yeah.
We have spent a lot of time going around and I understand there are some past compliance issues. And my goal here tonight is to find the path of least resistance forward. But I will suggest to you that creating a lot of additional deliverables, that we need to have a surveyor come out and do some work and-
Oh, this isn't survey work. I mean,
No.
We're talking about doing a, you know, you could, you could do a map from really Duchess County Geo Access that would be able to show the contours.
Right. There's no reason for a surveyor to go. In addition, Maria, I don't know how much you're cooperating with the Anderson Center, but Maria Espy has numerous site plans that she could let you have a detail of one, just to show us where the-
You can just-
They're before us all the time.
Yeah. The, the second sheet, we did have the CDs revised to include an overall property plan, which does show where the site is relative to the overall property.
It does, but there's, it's like, it's white. There's nothing. There are no existing conditions. So I'm just looking for a map, not even a plan.
If you can just, even with parcel access, you know, show where the, show a dot where the, where it is.
And some brief narrative just explaining that. Maybe we don't even need the section if you can just describe.
The addition is sufficiently small that I don't believe there's, visual impact analysis is remotely warranted. We would have had complaints from, because the tower, it's not appeared to have been approved at eighty feet or the, the maximum height does not be, was never approved to be approximately eighty feet. If it were visible, and I've spent many a time on the river, you could barely even see Manswell when it was there and leaf off. So it's, there's, the elevation is sufficiently high and the trees around it, the distance, the amount of landscape between the, where the antenna is located and the actual river that you could maybe see it if you're across on another ridge line across the way, but we can't do everything to prevent things like that.
And I think it just would support the board's ability to move forward on secret if they had narrative and a map.
Yeah.
Right. Okay. Well, we can certainly provide a little additional narrative in an addition.
Anything else, Ms. Axelson?
Um, let's see. I did go through code chapter one oh one, but I think what I'd like to do is just,
Put that in memo form?
Confer, put it in memo form and/or confer with Victoria about what we do and don't need.
Okay.
Since this is, I mean theoretically, what we're doing here is documenting what is as a new tower. So it's kind of odd, but I, but at least we'll have a baseline after this approval and that's what I'm looking for.
A new existing tower.
Right. We don't have any approximate line of vegetation, even some notation and blobs on a map that would say, there's vegetation all over the place. We don't even have that. So we, we need a little more guidance.
So would an aerial photo that blows up that area provide that kind of visual information for you?
That'd be nice.
I would think so. And, you know, something, as I said, with contours, which I think you can get from Duchess County Geo Access. The site and environs, you know.
So contour map and perhaps an aerial photo showing the specific location and the screening that are-
Yeah, Geo Access, you can turn all that stuff on. You could show Norrie Park to the north. Scenic cuts into the south, Route Nine. It should be pretty easy to do, so.
This will also make Ms. Moss happy to have that kind of record.
Right. And then, you know, there are, again, I would like to go over this with, with Victoria a little bit just to see. You know, because there's a whole bunch of stuff in the code I'm not sure that we really need. On the other hand, we don't have any provisions for removal. That's one of the requirements. So we can talk about that and then I'll do a review.
Right. I, I guess we would just ask that whatever additional information you seek or want, that we resolve it quickly. Obviously, this application's been pending for a while. Initial contact and building permit was filed in November. I realize there was a substantial delay in us getting additional material to late February, but it was late February. I've had a lot of discussions with Tad. I understand there's confusion onto the background of the site. I will tell you that the facility as we see it now has no Anderson School equipment on it. So I'm not sure why the town thinks it was approved for Anderson School and not for Dobson Communications, which we understand has been on the site since two thousand and four.
That two thousand and four precedes the terms of every person up here.
Yeah. And that is part of the problem is we don't have anybody on it.
And I've examined the file and there's actually not that much information in it. So it's Tad's best recollection that it was for internal communication only. Something like a better version of a walkie-talkie. And the site is large enough that that might probably sound plausible. How the town erred in not understanding that it was actually a telecom tower, I don't know. In addition, Ms. Moss and Mr. Westermeyer signed off for the building permit for the tower.
In two thousand, yep.
But I'm not sure why it wasn't compared to the site plan. Yes, Ms. Palladaro? Whatever you-
There just, there seems to be, let me just back up and explain how the process would work. Under your law, if it's a colocation, it only requires site plan approval if it meets certain thresholds. And that's an increase in height by more than fifteen percent or a fifty percent increase in the number of antennas. Otherwise, it's just subject to a building permit.
Uh, can I make-
That's, that's a colocation. This is colocation only.
Not a new tower.
Not a new tower.
So then if it's a-
No, no. I'm, maybe I'm misreading some of the stuff in section E in your exhibit, page two. I think it also says if you have four or more new equipment cabinets.
Oh, so that is, right. I don't know if that's, that might be part of the federal law, but so-
Yeah, this is federal I'm looking at. Again, I'm brand new to ever looking at sixty-four oh nine, so.
Well, they keep citing it, but it's not really that relevant at this point.
Well, except-
Hyde Park code, Hyde Park code, colocation is permitted on an existing structure and is subject to site plan review only if certain thresholds are met. If this was a new tower that you were approving, you'd be granting special use permit approval and there'd be a whole list of materials that you'd be required to collect. And some of them include an access agreement so that the town can go in and take down the tower if it ever falls or if it's broken, insurance requirements, et cetera. So this is, they found a loophole by putting up a telecommunications tower for non-commercial purposes, which means it wasn't subject to review under the section. And now all of a sudden, it's an existing tower which can just use for colocation. And so we're in this situation where we're only approving a colocation at this point. We're going to document that-
Can I?
Wait, 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 wait. We're going to document that the tower exists and we're going to ask for some additional information such as the access agreement from Anderson Center so that the town can get in and the insurance requirement.
Okay. But I'm, I'm back to the same section. It says it's considered a substantial increase in the size of the tower if. And having six equipment cabinets puts that into the substantial increase in tower size.
So what the-
Even though it isn't the height of the tower, it's substantial increase in stuff.
What the federal law does is it says, local communities, you can't put simple colocations through, you know, a six-month-long review process. You have to approve them as long as they meet these, they don't exceed these thresholds. And what you just read were the federal thresholds. So
Right.
I think in this case, they exceed those anyways, so they're still subject to the local review process.
Oh, okay. I didn't get the understanding that they were, this is considered a substantial increase in size.
I do want to clarify, I think I said earlier that there are six equipment cabinets. That is six total. It is six total.
Oh, okay. Your documentation, I think, says six new somewhere.
It should not. And looking at, looking at the drawings.
I think you said six new.
I did.
Yeah.
You had said six, I have agreed with you. And I apologize for that. That was clearly a mistake.
Somewhere in here, there is a statement about six new, so you need to fix that.
The zoning administrator did make a finding that this was an increase in antenna. So she found that this was a substantial, a hundred percent increase. So that, she found that this was a substantial improvement.
Right. And that is under the local code. And I, I, again, I, I understand you have a job to do and we are not looking to exploit loopholes. I, I, I have to disagree if that's-
I didn't use the word exploit.
Okay. I do think we heard loophole.
I did say loophole.
Discovered.
You discovered it.
I understand there's unclear documentation in the town files. At the same time, we do have a new federal law that says we shall expedite review of these types of things. Because exactly what's going on here in this town is what the federal government is trying to prevent.
Whoa, 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 whoa. Before you go on with that, this is the first time I've seen this application, anyone this board has seen this application. There's been no attempt to delay this, this process. So when you say what's going on in this town, what the focus is trying to prevent, this is the first time this board has actually heard you.
Let me just finish that thought. What I'm talking about is the entire process and not just, so this is clearly our first time before the board. And again, I'm not trying to steamroll. I'm looking for a path forward that makes sense. At the same time, I've got a client who is saying, well, federal law says this has to be approved. Not, not maybe needs to be approved, but must be approved. And there's a time limit. Federal law sets what we call the shot clock. We've documented all that for you. I understand-
It's in there and I want to make, I'm not disagreeing with you. What I'm going to tell you is that we also have a desire to move forward as expeditiously as possible on this. Ms. Moss, up till now though, I want to make sure you understand, is the one who's been in control, sort of the gatekeeper, so to speak. If she found a lack of information and sent it back to you, according to- If she found a lack of information and sent it back to you, according to her, that reset the dates. And I've examined everything that I've seen before as well. So, and I will also finally add, and Mrs. Palladaro will want to kill me, but if the applicant wants to sue the town, then it's free to pursue that as a path, because that will certainly enact some delay in this process.
And we're not looking to threaten or steamroll. Again, I'm just looking for a path forward.
And I just want to make sure, that's why I stopped things for the record. We do not believe we've been trying to introduce any delay. All we're trying to do is, at this point, clear up the fact that there is that vagueness that was the original approval.
Point is, the planning board is not the delay up to this point. We're just seeing this for the first time.
You are.
I'm going to ask you one other quick question.
Sure.
I am an engineer, my background. You made a comment, the generator is existing already on site. Did you check to make sure it's going to have the capacity to run your entire, your expanded unit by whatever?
Absolutely. And those are emergency backup generators only.
Oh, I understand that, but I mean, you know, that's when a tornado comes through, a tree drops, the power line goes down, and/or something happens, you got fire back there.
Those generators actually size for...
And the other question, obviously, from there comes back to the fire access, in case they need to put out the generator fire.
Sure.
And/or whatever, whether it's propane, I don't even know how it's powered.
Uh, it is diesel.
Let's go back now to our consultants, so we can resume the normal process. No, no. Ms. Palladaro, any other comments? Yes, no?
Um, no, I think I said everything I needed to say.
So...
I have one more question, which I think will be cleared up pretty quickly. I'm kind of assuming, because the tower height is so low, this, this, once we have our, you know, possibly an approval, and we have plans, that will be our base for what exists. So then the question with our law is, is colocation going to be entertained on this tower?
Yeah, and I think that's an issue you're going to have to deal with. Again...
Well, would it, do you anticipate that there are spots on that height underneath?
It's a wooden pole, so adding additional equipment probably would be challenging from a structural perspective.
Right.
But certainly there are ways to do that. I've seen wooden poles structurally enhanced to support more equipment. While it's only an 80-foot pole, the reason it really works for commercial communications is because it's on a rise over the river in the woods. So as you drive into the Anderson School, you go downhill, but you pop back up in that back parking lot where this facility is located. So the ground elevation gives you an extra 70 or 80 feet, which you would otherwise try to achieve by a much taller pole. Whether it would work for another carrier, no idea. AT&amp;T certainly can do everything it needs to do at its existing height.
Well, I think we, we're going to need, you know, part of the code, and I'll ask for this in my review letter, talks about colocation, so I think we're going to need some kind of a statement about whether you could collocate on this pole, and how it would be done, and also, you know, if it's going to change the structure. You know, will there be guys? Will there be a different base, that kind of...
Wouldn't that be required as part of the next application for colocation, rather than this one? Because it would likely not be your service provider that would, or your client that would...
It would not. It would be between the Anderson School and a third party.
And I do know, I don't, I don't use AT&amp;T, I use Verizon. And Verizon, well, no, it's just Verizon for years. As soon as I went into the main campus of the Anderson Center, I lost cell phone service. That would include being at Mills Mansion in Stattsburg. But they got a tower someplace now that I don't ever lose service there. So probably with AT&amp;T, you're losing service in that area, or it becomes spotty.
But again, we're on, we're on the tower now. This is an enhancement of existing coverage. So everybody's familiar with smartphones, I'm sure. They require more sophisticated antennas, in a very simple sense. And these are the new sophisticated antennas, the 4G coverage, if you will.
Is it Anderson Center or the third party that you said installed it?
Dobson Communications, I believe.
Yeah, so it was installed by Dobson, and AT&amp;T acquired all of the assets of Dobson, so it's a good point. It is an AT&amp;T-owned structure, if you will.
Okay.
AT&amp;T does have a colocation policy. We'd be happy to provide you with that. But to the chairman's point, to the extent someone actually wants to colocate on there, there's a fair amount of engineering and study work they'd have to do to figure out exactly what would be necessary, and that is not something we would be look to be doing at this time. But we can certainly provide you with a copy of AT&amp;T's colocation policy, which readily allows other carriers to colocate on their...
The only reason I'm asking now is for the planning board to think ahead, so that if the colocator would be an expedited review, that anything we need to know for Seeker would be done. Because if the colocator comes on as an expedited review under a building permit, if that, if it falls under that threshold, there's no Seeker.
Right.
So that's why I'm raising that...
Yeah, and actually, soon, we believe there'll be no Seeker for the planning board at all. The DEC has proposed, as part of its Seeker changes to the regulations, that colocations and modifications to existing facilities will be type two. We do protect the position that they're type two now. That will just provide additional clarification in discussions with the DEC. The reason they put that in is because they constantly get requests for information about whether modifications should be treated as type two, and they thought they would just clarify for the record. But the existing type-two list includes modifications of existing facilities that do not change the facility or structure substantially.
So any Seeker that's going to be done on this tower, or anybody colocating, is now. That's all I'm raising, I believe.
You'd be asking us to do secret analysis on, yeah, hypothetical. It could be that there's never any colocation. And if we're under, I'm sorry, can you repeat the name of that moronically titled act again?
Yes.
The Job Creation something or other? Taxpayer, Saving Taxpayer Dollars?
It is the Federal Middle Class Tax Relief...
There you go.
Job Creation Act. This was the Job Creation Act.
I'm sure that was named by the House of Representatives, because they have a panache for doing things like that. Nothing to do with telecommunications. At any rate, if we're subject to that, and we're supposed to be doing expedited review, if, as Mr. Attorney Walters suggested, that requiring additional deliverables now will only delay that, then I'll look to the judgment of the board, but I personally don't, I don't see how we do that now. I know, because there'd be no secret review.
No, he could simply address that in his narrative about the visual stuff.
It's going to go below, so. So what, in the future, let's just say you were going to collocate, and you needed to put up guy wires. Those would not be exempt under, the way I'm reading...
It would be more than a 20-foot extension of the appurtenance.
Right, so then you would have to come in for the site plan approval.
Whoever would, right. So just to be clear, AT&amp;T...
You, as owner, would have to sign off on it and authorize it, but your representative would have to come in, correct?
It would be whoever the carrier is.
Right.
So if you do intend to change the pole from a wooden structure to a monopole, then we're going to treat that as a new tower as well?
That would be up to you.
Okay.
I would not fight you on that.
Okay, let's turn over to my right now. Mr. Oliver, any comments?
No comment.
Ms. Dexter?
Um, no, no comment.
Mr. Glenn, any further comments?
Uh, yeah, okay. We sort of addressed, does the fire department have access to this in case there is a fire?
To our knowledge, the driveway is accessible to fire equipment. We could certainly look at that further and see if the fire inspector has gone out there. But this is accessible by access road through the Anderson facility, and some of the school, there's several buildings in the back.
Yeah, I'm more familiar with the Anderson School, because we have 24 propane tanks underground there, which is a little bit of a thorn in my side. But any rate, I just want to make sure that the fire department does have access to there under whatever set of circumstances.
Sure.
And the other thing, just to clarify for me, AT&amp;T already owns the three antennas and equipment, et cetera, and you're adding three more?
Yes. So the...
Also owned by AT&amp;T?
Absolutely.
Okay.
All under existing federal license.
You just said these are 4G antenna, as opposed to...
UMTS.
Whatever the old one was. 2G, 3G, 1G, whatever.
Yeah.
So is this designed to transmit more data for smartphones more quickly?
It will handle more high-speed data, will communicate with more devices. So if you've ever, if you've got a smartphone and you see when your connection, it's 3G, it's a little slower. It's less capacity on the site. 4G is faster, more technology. Just, it's much more efficient at handling the data.
I see how that gives middle classes tax relief. Okay.
And job creation.
And job creation. Any comments, Mr. Murphy?
Just that, you know, the normal, I think the normal headaches that you have, which are usually visual or absent in this application, so the paperwork may be a little more challenging because of what was done previously, but I think you're going to move right along, and I don't want you to think we're, we want to slow you down. We just want to document what we're doing.
Correct.
We understand. And I apologize if I came off as...
It's okay. I tend to get a little testy when someone inserts into the record that we're being naughty ourselves, so... So if I can go back a moment, then there's no special use permit required, because we're accepting this as an existing telecommunications tower.
It's an existing tall structure.
Okay, existing tall structure.
But we are going to request some of the other, some of the other documentation, but we're not issuing a special use permit.
Therefore, you get a lot more quick anyway. And as you know, we're required to refer to county planning, which means that we have three days in which to allow them to respond. So given that, I, that is a built-in timeframe that we can't alter. I can ask Ms. Levarnway for expedited review. We will do so. Do we believe that any of the information that we're going to request will be relevant toward Ms. Levarnway's review? Is there anything that would hold us back from being able to circulate what we have now?
I don't think so.
I don't either, but I'm just, this...
I don't think so.
I think that, given its location and the fact that you're correct, we wouldn't be having, there's no reason for you to lie. I've heard the DEC is considering moving these over to type-two permanently, so knowing that, I can't imagine that there'll be a lot of issues for county. These are county-wide issues. But we're still required to give it over, so that gives you three days in which to supply anything that's been requested.
Michael, I'm going to go back to my comment earlier about fire department access to this. It is, I believe, a fenced-in area?
It's a fenced compound, so the compound itself...
And is there a key, then, somehow accessible for the fire department to get in to fight a fire?
Typically, the fire department just bolt cutters right through any locks.
Are you comfortable with that comment, sir?
Whoa, 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 whoa. This is not, you're not, do not ask the fire department to speak without coming up into a public hearing. And are you, is this, I don't know, ensure what fire department covers this, if it's Hyde Park or if it's Stattsburg? That's what I thought.
Propane tanks.
Chief Davis does not represent Stattsburg, so we need to make sure that we, so we'll refer it to them?
So we need to refer that question to the fire department.
Particularly because, since it was the original approval, it wasn't designed as a telecommunications tower, so we'll add them to the circulation list. And any other comments?
We, we were going to conduct an uncoordinated review for Seeker, and the only reason we're not treating it as type-two is because we don't have existing approvals.
Right.
So I'm just going to add a paragraph four to the resolution that says directs its secretary to refer the application to Stattsburg Fire District or Company.
Yes, as an interested agency only.
No, just for comments.
Just for comments, okay.
Not under Seeker.
Okay. Yeah, because there is, thank you.
If you can get us the contact info for the fire department, we'll also do some direct follow-up, just to make sure it's on their radar screen and make sure they don't have any concerns.
Be very patient. They don't answer the telephone a lot.
Okay.
During fires, hopefully.
Tim will take that one on.
No, I'm not saying that, they're, they're, they're not always out doing fires, it's just, there's not always someone there. It's 911 they'll answer the phone to, but trying to contact them directly isn't always... The individual you need to contact is what I should say. Just be patient.
Okay. Well, we'll do that. We'll get that from you.
When is this going to be on the agenda again?
Well, we're going to type and refer it, so I thought we could set the public hearing for as soon as possible.
Thirty-five days.
Because we're...
Are you doing 30 days?
Yeah.
Okay. I'm just adding it to the resolution with the requested response by June...
June da-da-da.
No, 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 no.
Fourth, sixth? I'm sorry, I have a calendar in front of me.
I should have it with me. Well, fifth.
Um, Mr. Chairman, if I may, the chief of the Stattsburg Fire Department is on a two-month leave. He is over in England and Turkey and will be back until July. And I don't know if there's any other representatives of Stattsburg available.
We'll hope that there's an assistant chief, but if they don't respond by 30 days, then they don't respond.
Just letting you know.
Thank you. In other words, it's June 6th.
Thank you.
June 4th. I thought I was right, it is the 4th. If, if the chief didn't leave someone behind to make responses, then they just won't be able to respond. And then they'll come and kill us, but that's, neither here nor there. We're under federal, sort of a consent decree to get this thing expedited. So those were sort of, I just wondered about the special use permit, so we'd make sure that we knew how to... Ms. Moss has agreed, so that once we get this on the record, we're free to move forward. That's what's most important.
Yeah. Ms. Moss and I have discussed it, and we both agree that this is to be treated as colocation on an existing tall structure. It's not required that the existing tall structure be approved, so.
Gotcha, gotcha. This is a neat legal step, then, I think. So who has this file?
I have this file.
And did you amend this?
No.
Page two, did you?
Can I steal your amended copy with the hieroglyphics? Am I going to be able to read this?
You don't have to read the whole thing. You can ship the...
All right. We will start very quickly at the top. Anderson Center for Autism, New Singular Wireless PCS LLC, May 7th, 2014, Resolution 13-050. Where is the applicant? New Singular Wireless PCS has submitted an application for site plan approval to colocate three antennas, six remote radio units. Now, should we change that to three, because it's three new?
Uh, we should keep it just the way it is.
Yes.
Yes. Uh, radio units, one surgery restroom, two cabinets on an existing tall structure located Anderson Center for Autism, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera.
Whereas where?
And whereas, whereas, whereas. Okay. We're going to come down to the meat of this. Now, therefore, be it resolved, the planning board hereby classifies the project as an unlisted action under SECR, for which an uncoordinated review will be conducted. And two, directs its secretary to refer the application to Dutchess County Department of Planning and Development pursuant to Section 239m of general municipal law. Directs its secretary to refer the application to the Town of Asofas for comment pursuant to Section 239NN of the general municipal law, and directs its secretary to refer the application to the Stattsburg Fire District for review with the requested response by June 4th, 2014. Do I have a second?
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And make it a motion to set the public hearing for June 4th.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
In case you're wondering, it was referred to Town of Asofas, because you're located in the Estates District of statewide scenic area of significance, so... And since this is a colocation on an existing tall structure, just in case they have comments, we're going to refer... They haven't referred anything back to us thus far.
Absolutely. We have no problem with additional...
So... Ms. Palladaro and Ms. Zaxelson, you're going to get together, decide what you need from the applicant for us to move forward, and communicate that to them as quickly as possible, since we're under a timeframe, correct?
Beginning of next week.
Thank you. Is that sufficient for you guys?
That's perfect. Is there, would the board prefer a deadline for getting it in before the public hearing? Specifically, a week before? Is there...
A week before is nice, because we're all volunteers, unpaid, and it gives us time to analyze everything.
Very good. So we will...
Yes, ma'am.
The other thing is, um, do you guys want to give me the books, so they don't have to supply more?
Yeah. That's scary. If you send that, it was a county, they'll never going to read that.
Mine has notes in it, I'm afraid to tell you. Does anyone have a clean version?
I was going to say, I've marked mine up with some of the tower stuff.
There's a couple of comments, but not...
You need one for the county, one for the Fire District.
And one for Asofas.
You can...
We can get you...
I have one more in there.
Pardon me?
No, it's Chris.
You want mine?
Want to give yours that?
Yeah. If you need it anymore, we'll...
Yeah.
Do you have more, Mr.?
You can tell your client how cooperative we've been, that we've saved them some money.
I will. I will also, just for the record, to, I understand there may be a discrepancy between how we calculate shot clock and how you calculate shot clock. We will suggest that by setting the public hearing, we're, to the extent necessary, mutually agreeing to extend shot clock.
Great. As I said, the only person who can really determine how, which interpretation is correct is a judge.
Right. Agreed, and I hope we never get...
And we like to avoid that.
We would too.
But we appreciate the formal waiver of our time.
Well, but, I mean, it starts out by saying we can't put a time limit on it, and then it did a follow-up of 90 days.
Yeah, some of what was confusing was it appeared that your first communication said, "We don't really need site plan, but then we're going to do it anyway."
Yeah, so...
It was confusing for us.
Yeah, it is a confusing area. So what we have typically done, I probably have 40 or 50 building permit applications that get rejected, and then we're required to go through some kind of planning process. What we typically do is file what we call an eligible facilities request with the board. That's what this is. We will file your fees and fill out your forms, but ultimately, we don't think we need site plan approval, but we understand not everybody agrees with that, so...
But you clearly crossed, you clearly crossed the thresholds that are in the federal law. You're doing more than 50% expansion of your antennas. You've got three, you're putting up six, that's 100%.
No, 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 that's, that's not the federal law, that's your law.
Oh, right, I'm sorry, that is our law. What am I saying?
Yes. So that we believe that's preempted.
I get you.
But again, we prefer not to have the fights. We just...
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, yeah.
You tell us what you need, we'll get it to you. This is moving along.
And it's funny because co-location shouldn't be, shouldn't be hard.
That's why the law was, really, the...
Well, no, we've done this before on another location, the CIA, they have co-located, they've got antenna up inside Roth Hall.
Yep.
And it pretty much sailed through, although we did examine visual impacts.
Inside a...
But in the extreme, Michael, if people get objective to the visual concept of it and that starts a riot.
Right. We've seen health effect concerns.
There's been a long, there's been a heated battle, I have to understand, in Town of Mylan recently.
Yeah.
I'm not sure if that was AT&amp;T New Singular, but whatever, they're requiring, they're putting up one of those, to me, yeah, but to me, not realistic-looking trees, so... I mean, we don't live in the giant sequoias over here in Redwood, so you don't really see trees that tall, but, another matter. So we'll see you in about a month, a little less than a month.
We appreciate it.
Just a piece of historical note, if you remember the culinary, we did not have the basis of federal law at this point.
Correct.
We had the power outage in the Northeast, and it was recommended you have backup power source, and they balked at it, and they said, "Well, we'll roll a generator in if we lose power." And we, I said, you know, "If the trees had caused the reason you dropped power, you can't get into there."
Yep.
You know, you've lost another cellphone situation.
Right.
At any rate, that's historical.
Yeah. Now, since Superstorm Sandy, we're seeing diesel generators at all the sites.
Well, actually, in this area, we lose power. Storm is far less significant than Superstorm Sandy, I can assure you. So at any rate, thank you for journeying down, and it's been a pleasure.
Thanks for your time.
We'll see you in a little, like I said, a less than a month, and we'll communicate via email whatever our two consultants confer and decide is necessary to move forward. But I don't think it's going to be unduly burdensome at all.
It'd be great.
Right? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I just realized that there may be people staying for the next, what's listed on the agenda as Hyde Park Central School District sign permits. That's off the agenda at my request.
Ah.
At my bidance, my apologies, are you representing them too?
Yes.
Ms. Moss is not, there are two reasons for me to take this off. Number one, Ms. Moss has not analyzed sign by sign, so we're not, we can only take action on North Park, but more importantly, there's been discussion from the town's perspective along with these Hyde Park Central School District's perspective, and Ms. Paladaro, at our town attorney's request, has come up with a policy for how we proceed for these kinds of issues, but only Ms. Moss and I reviewed it thus far. So I reviewed it immediately, and then Ms. Moss has taken her about a month. But I got after it on Monday, and so she's done it, but we need to send it to the town board. They haven't seen it yet, so the town board and the school board will have to agree on what the process to be followed is, and I just now, after, I think Victoria made some changes to it based on Ms. Moss's comments and mine. So that's now, the rest of the board has seen it, and I can discuss that with them at some point later on, but I don't want to discuss anything quite yet until the school district and the town have agreed.
Okay, when is the town board meeting?
I'm not sure if they're ready to discuss it.
Yeah, this just got sent to them today, so...
I know, I was not going to be involved in any kind of committee thing when I came on board and submitted it. It was my first question, and we relented to believe that it had been kind of worked through, so not until...
We think it has been worked through.
Worked through, yeah, it has.
They have to agree, and there's a question on fees, because they waive fees for signs for schools, but if there's variances required, and also the cost of publicizing the Monroe hearing, and also the school district has to agree on us doing it, and if the school district chooses to do it itself, then, which is permissible, then they would need to be able to notify us and have, so there's just some things to cross out. I don't think you need to represent, though, the signs myself, because...
I just wanted to kind of be on hand and...
Okay.
...use their bar question, I mean, you know, just see how it follows through, and initially, we were looking for, by the end, graduation, we found out this is...
Yeah, I mean...
And already got approved, so now, you know, our, we'd love to be able to have them open, you know, prior to the new school year.
That, I'm pretty certain, I'm pretty certain that'll be worked through before then, well before then.
Yeah.
The real, no, no.
It's not a table, too.
The real issue...
Electric and everything.
I will, you know, sort of throw myself on the fire here. The real issue is that Wayne Kurlander and I both assumed incorrectly that it was exempt. The signs were exempt from our code completely. And as it turns out, that's not necessarily the case, so...
There's variance in town to town.
Yeah. Well, part of what triggered the signage was actually discussing what goes on at Hyde Park Elementary, because they thought they had a couple of tenants, but then, as it turns out, once we had a discussion, they didn't want any of the tenants' people to have a sign. And no commercial tenant that I know of wants to go into a building where no one can find it. No signs at all allowed, so that led to discussion of signage in general, and then it went on from there. It was about a two-and-a-half hour discussion. Only Mr. Signa, who's absent tonight, was here for that meeting, so that's why I had Ms. Paladaro send out her proposal to the rest of the board. So it may take, it'll probably take a month for us to work this through. After that, you should be able to, well, I shouldn't say fly right, though we haven't done a Monroe balancing hearing before. So we're going to be looking to Ms. Paladaro for lots of guidance on this.
I would like to attend anything that I'm allowed to.
You're always allowed to.
And certainly, if you have any further questions or anything on it, that has my number.
Okey-dokey.
You're on the list to get copies of the monthly agendas, right?
Yes.
Okay.
So I didn't know if that was somebody's special comment. Terrific.
As I said, the person who specked the bid, I think, is actually here, in the audience as well, if I'm correct, and he'll have to work it through, yes. So spec the bid, as I said, but we're just, we need to work through the procedure and behind the scenes before we can move forward, basically.
No problem.
Okay, thank you. Last two items on the agenda. I sent, I wrote a letter that's pretty brief for expressing our support for local law. This is the one that will reduce the 3% open space for lot line revisions only. You'll still have to have the open space if you come in for any new housing later on. And in addition, I did look at our fee schedule, and there's a base price plus a dollar amount per lot. Since there's no new lots, it's just the base price which takes care of our advertising, holding public hearing, and using any consultant's costs. That's all. That was a good, that was a good, I had to go check. It was pretty good. So may I get a motion authorizing me to send this to the town board?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And I emailed...
My comment is, by the way, that was very nicely written in the letter, Michael.
Thank you, very much. Then, the last item is, we had a referral from the Town of Asofas regarding a subdivision of land owned now by Christian Brothers. Basically, it's a single parcel, it's bisected by 9W, it's styled Broadway over there in the Town of Asofas, or I say Town of Asofas, it's in the Town of, I'm a little confused. The Town of Asofas appears to be in the Town of Port Euan, too. So at any rate, they're looking to legally subdivide the parcel that lies east of 9W, and then according to various comments, to sell it. So if you read my response letter, I did confer with Ms. Paladaro before I sent it, and Ms. Axelson, who both agreed that it did appear that there might be impermissible segmentation of Secra, because if they're looking to sell it, and it's going to be R40, it's going to, I mean, the subdivision is for a specific purpose, and they seem to be not paying attention to what the purpose of it is, just treating it as though there's, it's just going to be owned by the same two people when it won't.
If it's, if it's just a subdivision and a sale of land, it's not segmentation, but they should be asking questions about the future intended use of the property.
And it already says it in there, there's one comment, it'll make it easier to develop, which of course it does. So the other, I agree that they're, they've, the planning board across the river has said we need to see some sort of easement about the wastewater treatment plant because it surfaces, it service, services right now, both structures. They've done that. Ms. Axelson had me point out that there were no elevations, and it's a, actually, that's a pretty tall area. And it appears as though where the railroad further bisects the new, proposed new parcel, that there's only an underground pedestrian easement to go underneath the railroad tracks now, so it looks as though it's not buildable, but as, if you look at the parcel to the north and to the south, it's possible to have a road that would go, that would already correct.
The road that crosses the parcels.
Right. That crosses in the parcel to the side, so it could be developed, meaning that they probably should. The rest of it were just small points that, you know, like point five, I didn't mean to sound snippy, but part two, it very clearly says should be completed by the agency. However, I know that some agencies, some boards, to allow the applicants to complete part two and then just sort of say they accept it or not. We don't do that here, we always fill out part two, as you saw earlier ourselves, and part three. And then I suggested that Sinek Hudson and Riverkeeper be added as interested agencies for purposes of circulation, only because I think they would be interested. If, I mean, the, the housing lots, if they're created, would have direct, I mean, really pretty majestic views of the river, so they might, those agencies might also have some interest in seeing what's going on. And last, and I didn't mean to be snitty either, it's just in the minutes they referred to a report that they received dated July 2nd, 2014, and that's not possible.
Future development.
Yeah, it was actually dated April 4th. So any comments on the letter?
Michael, my only comment was, you had mentioned that this should be circulated